So we'll go to item number seventeen on our agenda. That's under public hearings. This is the consideration of the fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three fee schedule update, which was continued from our meeting of this past Tuesday. And I understand our presenter is going to be Thomas Young, but would anyone like to introduce Thomas or speak? I don't see any other video cameras on, so Thomas, take it away.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So I'll be giving a brief presentation on the fee schedule today. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Paul and City Council. Today, I'll be presenting the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three proposed fee schedule. I'll be talking about what is a fee, fees for city services, fee development, new fees, fiscal impact, and their recommendation. What is a fee? A user fee is a fee or rate charged to an individual or group that receives a private benefit in services provided by the city. The city has five fee schedules for city services. Schedule A, general fees, is for miscellaneous fees that are not associated with one department, such as abatement fees, false alarms for PRA requests. Schedule B, for engineering fees, is for services related to public works engineering, such as design and inspections. Schedule C, planning fees, is for fees related to community development, planning division. This includes current, mid, and long-term planning. Schedule D, building fees, is related to community development, building division fees, including general building, construction plan check, and building code enforcement. Schedule E is for parks and recreation services, and these are market-driven fees. The city performs a fee study approximately every seven years. In fiscal year twenty-sixteen, seventeen, the city conducted its most recent comprehensive fee study. Staff has submitted a budget proposal in the fiscal year twenty-three proposed budget for the next fee study, and if this proposal is approved, staff plans to develop a RFP and complete the study in fiscal year twenty-three. In between these fee studies, the city adjusts fees using either the Bay Area Consumer Price Index, or CPI, the Bay Area Construction Cost Index, or CCI, or the estimated increase in budgeted labor costs. For fiscal year twenty-three, the CPI increases five-point-two percent, the CCI increases nine-point-eight percent, and the increase in labor cost is one percent. The city is currently negotiating with its bargaining groups because labor agreements expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Due to the uncertainty, the one percent labor cost increase only accounts for step increases and changes in CalPERS retirement rates. It does not include any cost of living adjustments or coloss or any equity adjustments. Next year, the labor cost factor will consist of a true-up for fiscal year twenty-three plus the normal labor cost increase for fiscal year twenty-four. On this slide, we have a history of changes in escalators, and we can see that CPI was applied to Schedule A, CCI and labor cost increases to Schedule B, CPI and labor cost increases to Schedule C, and labor costs to Schedule D. No escalator was applied to Schedule E, as parks and recreation fees are market-driven in order to be competitive with other entities that offer competing services. Now I'll discuss any new fees. I'll start with Schedule A. On Schedule A, staff is proposing to add a new category titled animal establishment permit. And then, under this category, they propose to move private kennel, which has a fee of three-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, as well as add three new categories, pet shop, grooming business, and horse establishment, which would all have the same rates, three-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. On Schedule B, engineering fees, no new fees are proposed. For park plan dedication and leave fees and transportation impact fees, the Public Works Department is continuing to evaluate fees for fiscal year twenty-three, and staff is recommending that increases be deferred to allow for further review of potential fee increases. No new fees are proposed for Schedule C. For Schedule D, staff is proposing a new fee for cellular and mobile phone alterations to existing facilities. Currently, there is no fee for installing antennas on existing pole structures, and so this would be a fee based on two hours of building staff time, or four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Other changes listed in the staff report for Schedule D include changes to descriptions, the addition of three fees that were admitted in last year's fee schedule, the alignment of fees of hourly rates, and the removal of expedite planning fee, as that fee is no longer offered. On Schedule E, parks and recreation fees, city staff are proposing several new fees. At the Quinlan Community Center, Parks and Recreation is proposing the establishment of fees for the craft room. At Monta Vista Recreation Center, staff is proposing the addition of fees for Monta Vista Kitchen and Room Five, and the rates for these fees are based on fees for rooms of similar capacities. At the senior center, staff is proposing to replace the seven-dollar flex pass with a drop-in rate to more accurately adjust to the varying cost of classes and programs offered at the senior center. This rate is for members to drop into specific fitness classes listed in the fifty-plus scene. For outdoor facilities, the field attendant fee is increasing from seventeen to eighteen dollars per hour to a line of minimum wage requirements. Staff is also proposing the establishment of picnic rental fees for Creekside Park, as well as adding new barbecue pits that were established, and the rates are eighty dollars for residents and one-hundred-and-nine for non-residents, and the rates are based on fees for similar capacities at Portal Park. For sports field fees, staff is proposing to increase the fees to one-hundred percent of what was recommended. Last year, the fees were updated to incorporate an hourly fee schedule. However, this shift to an hourly schedule increased costs for field users, and to ease in this increase, City Council approved implementing the proposed fees over two years, for fifty percent in fiscal year twenty-two and one-hundred percent in fiscal year twenty-three. For parks, special events permits, staff is proposing establishing fees for festivals and events at Civic Center Plaza, one-thousand dollars per event day, and this is based on a similar capacity, five-hundred or fewer, at Memorial Park. Finally, I'll discuss the fiscal impact of these fee schedule updates. Due to the proposed fee schedule increases, additional revenues of ninety-two thousand six-hundred-and-sixty-two in the general fund and one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand in enterprise funds are estimated, and these revenue projections are based on three-year historical averages. Finally, staff recommends adopting a resolution, two-two oh-four-nine, approving the fiscal year twenty-three fee schedules A, B, C, A, B, C, D, and E, effective July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Hey, Thomas, let's go to our members of the public, and I'll remind our members of the public, there are no hands raised yet in Zoom, but if you do raise your hand, you'll have three minutes to speak, and if you're on the phone, I don't think anyone is, but if you are, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand in Zoom. By the time the first person is done speaking, you'll need to have your hand raised, or you can also email your comment into our city clerk, that's cityclerk@cupertino.org. I don't see anybody with a hand raised at this point, and so I'll bring this back to our council. Are there any questions of Thomas or of other staff from council on the first go-around here to help clarify the presentation? Councilmember Willie has a hand raised.
Yeah, thanks, Thomas, for the update. The one that I would ask about is the cell tower adding antennas on existing poles. Great, if we have not been charging for planning staff time, four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars now for two hours of staff time, absolutely, but does that really cover our cost when they're adding new poles and new infrastructure? Down in Rancho, Verizon is cutting up the streets and laying wires in the streets, and then the pavement replacement and things of that nature, that sure, all that infrastructure up and down the entire streets, sounds to me like a lot more than four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Maybe you can comment?
So I'll add that the city does have additional fees for other types of alterations, so the one that we are proposing is alterations to existing facility, but they do have a fee for freestanding cell towers, and that is one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five, and then for towers that are attached to buildings, that would be one-thousand-and-four dollars.
How about the infrastructure? Previously, Chad had told us that there's actually a moratorium on the streets, once they've been paved, outside facilities are not able to come in and cut up our streets for three years. Well, in Rancho, it's pretty much been three years since the last repaving, so they're actively going up and down the streets, laying their fiber optics. What's the fee that they're being charged to lay in all that and do all that checking? I noticed the barricades that prevent us from actually traveling up and down on certain streets because they have them torn up.
Through the mayor, Matt Morley, Director of Public Works, I can help you with that a little bit, council member. So the utility companies are required to restore the roadway to the previous condition, so they have to pay back to new condition, the work where they're working, so that we make sure to manage them on that, and that includes the full depth of the trench that they dig. There are fees associated with utility permits, and we have an inspector who watches to make sure that they're doing that adequately, so that is cost recovery from that perspective. We are required to allow them into the right-of-way for that work, so we work with them as we do with all utility companies to achieve that work.
Seems pretty extensive. Are you happy with the fee schedule? Because that wasn't on the list. Are you happy with the fees? You know, historically, a water main break or something, you know, was a spot repair. You know, the extensive nature of what they're doing is pretty extreme. Are you happy with the fee recovery? I mean, you know, a local dig versus the entire street sure seems to me like, you know, a lot more oversight and inspection.
It is a lot of work, but I think we are at cost recovery, so we're comfortable with that, and that's our limitation. We also want to consider that this is bringing fiber optics to the neighborhoods, and that's a big benefit for the residents.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morley. Thank you, Director Morley. And so I don't see further hands raised. Do we have, or we do actually, so Councilmember Moore, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation here. I was wondering about the fees in Schedule E for recreation. When I did some comparisons for room rentals for surrounding cities, it seemed like we are low, and I was also curious about our policy with regards to a Cupertino nonprofit rental rate versus a resident. So, for instance, if you wanted to rent, let's say, the Cupertino room at Quinlan, for a nonprofit, a Cupertino nonprofit, it is thirty dollars, but for a resident group, it's one-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. So I was just wondering what the philosophy was, if anyone can recall that, regarding why there's this discrepancy. And then I'm not seeing the definition of a nonprofit. I would think it is a five-oh-one-C-three, but it is not specifying that, and when I go look at the lists of nonprofits, there are multiple nonprofit designations, so I would assume it would follow the grant funding policy, that it would be a five-oh-one-C-three, but I think that's something that needs to be specified, and if it is specified, I'm unable to locate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Would anyone from staff like to address those comments or questions?
Sure, thank you. Director, Parks and Recreation, Joanne McGrini, and I am here with our management analyst, Kevin Koo, who can help me out with some of these answers to these questions for you, Councilmember Moore. Wanted to let you know, traditionally, yes, we use the five-oh-three-C as our point of reference for nonprofits, so if that is not clear in the fee schedule or in the documentation, we can certainly add that information, that's my understanding. And traditionally, I think that, you know, we revisit the fee schedule, I think it's every seven years in Cupertino, and we are scheduled to do a fee schedule study next year, where we would look at all the fees associated to the charges that we put forth. I think that this last was brought to council for their consideration in twenty-sixteen, as I recall, and there was not an appetite to raise the fees higher at that point in time, and so we will be doing an extensive study next year to examine that and bring forward more market analysis.
Okay, thank you, Director McGrini, and is there anything else?
One more question, through the mayor. Do we have fines in this list? I wasn't seeing, like, some cities, I noticed, they'll show the fees, and then they'll also have the fines as well, and that was something I, it seemed like I saw them sort of scattered through a little bit, and maybe next year when we go do our full review, it can be kind of ordered that way, because to make it a little bit easier to find those items, but I'm not sure if we have them separated out. I didn't, I couldn't find them.
Oh, so the question is about the fines? Did anyone want to...
Sorry, I'm scrolling through our document, and I don't see that we have fines, we have security deposits and those sorts of things, but I'll defer to Kevin since he has his hand up.
Okay, Kevin, take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kevin. I apologize, my first time kind of speaking in public. So the main fines that, at least for the recreation, that we have, it is listed as an overtime fee, so that's mainly fines, like if groups do stay past their reserve time, that we did define those fees to charge them if they do stay past, be it an hour, an hour, and so forth. In terms of other fines, like, say, for example, if there's, if a group has used a room and, you know, something has been broken accidentally or something along those lines, that is what we utilize their security deposit for, and because there's no way to fully estimate, like, the cost for, you know, fixing a broken light, a hole in the wall, just random examples, we then defer to Public Works to direct us or to provide an estimate for us that we then communicate to the renter, and then we would deduct from their security deposit to cover those costs.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. And Councilmember Moore, your hand is still raised, but do you have any follow-ups?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, if I were to rent Community Hall, and it's, and say I had a nonprofit group, for thirty dollars an hour, would I, would that also include being able to have the video cameras and the screens going, and, you know, trash pickup if we have meals there, things of that nature, or is that an extra staff time addition to the charge? Because for the thirty dollars for a nonprofit to use it, if they were to get all those extra services, that could take maybe someone to unlock the door, somebody to lock it back up, someone to pick up all the trash and compostables and all that afterwards, and maybe if I needed chairs and tables to be set out, that's going to be another, you know, two people for that, and then if I need video help and microphones and all that, that's even more assistance. So I'm wondering how we have it set up right now, if we're charging anywhere near what it actually costs or not.
Sorry, go ahead, Director McGrini.
So my understanding, when we do the fee schedule study, and I have done this at my previous city, is you take all of those overhead items into consideration when you're determining the fee, so I don't believe that we factor those things out of the fee in Cupertino, but again, we've been closed mostly during COVID, so I'll defer to staff about how that rental actually works. So Kevin, if I'm missing anything, let me know.
This is more, apologies, this is more just for clarification. So some of the fees that you had mentioned, like specifically, if it does involve a video, if there's a request to record a meeting, those fees are actually determined through our communications, through the communications department, so they have fees that they charge that are separate. The thirty dollars that we have on our fee schedule, that is specific to having a staff person to help them set up tables and chairs. We do help them with, like, rudimentary audio/video capabilities, so like, if they need a projector, if they need microphones, like, those aspects are staff-covered, but if it's anything past that, recordings, televised of those sorts, that, then they would then talk to communications, specifically the video department, and then they would estimate fee or have fee, establish fees based on their costs. And might be more information than you were asking, but for the, normally for the weekday fees, so as you mentioned, thirty dollars per hour, at least the way that I understand it, because we do have a full-time staff person that is assigned to that, to the room, his or their budget or their expenses, like, to be onsite are captured in the staffing, in the staffing allocation for the room, or for, yeah, and so that's why, like, you would see kind of a bit of a jump when it changes from weekdays to weekends, because then when it moves to the weekend fee, that is when we would then need to budget or ask for part-time staff to come and help for the general cleaning, setting up, helping them out, kind of being there for the event, providing support. So that's kind of why it's a bit of a, it's a leap from when it's what we call weekday or, I guess, non-prime, I apologize, I'm adding extra terms, but it's really just weekday fees to then after-hours and then weekend fees.
Okay, let's move on to Vice Mayor Chow this time, Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. So a member of the public mentioned to me that Santa Clara Parks do not require rental fees, it's free for residents. I'm not entirely sure if that's true, but I'm curious, for our park rental fee, do we charge them to cover our cost of renting the facility out, like, staffing, and what does the staff do for park rental?
Go ahead, Kevin.
I believe we do charge something if, I don't know. Sorry, my camera seems to have turned off, and I'm not sure if you can, well, I'll just keep explaining.
We can hear you.
Okay. Okay, I apologize, I'm getting an error message that says failed to start camera, but we do charge, okay, apologies. We do charge groups when they do rent picnic areas. The fees are based on, I believe it's the capacity of the groups, so like, let me just bring that up really quick. Like, for example, Memorial Park, because their capacity is about one-hundred-and-thirteen people, we charge them, we essentially are charging a dollar per person, so to speak. These fees mainly cover, like, cleanup costs for, like, after a group uses the space, I believe it more covers the cost for public works staff to then go into the site, take up the trash, clean up the space, and so on. Yeah, that would be what those fees are for, to my understanding. If someone from Public Works wants to correct me, please.
And including, like, restroom cleanup, those things?
That, I'm not sure, that'll be a question for Public Works.
Okay, Director Morley.
Thank you, yes, we have a contract to regularly clean park restrooms anyways, so that's just done on its regular service interval, even with events that are there.
Okay, so we don't charge events extra for restroom cleanup?
No, we don't.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. Kevin, you are actually doing really well, keep it up.
Thank you so much again, I apologize, I don't know why my camera won't start.
So I have a question regarding cell towers. So we have three categories of locations for cell towers, and I think, yeah, we try to, like, recover costs to, for this kind of thing, but when it's, when they choose the category that's located on neighborhood streets, that's when it's require more staffing and even city council time, because it complicates the issue. So can we charge more if they choose the locations that's less favorable and that's requiring more staff and council time?
So who wants to take on that question? Director Morley?
Thank you, yeah, so I'm a little rusty on the cell towers, but I believe that there's some restrictions on what we can do with cell towers. We do, where we can be cost-recover, we are cost-recovery, it's an average cost recovery, so when we do the fee studies, we average it across all of the work that we do. So for instance, if we have ten-thousand dollars in expenses over a course of a year, and we issued ten permits, we would know that it's about a thousand dollars a permit, and that's how we would determine the fee structure. So that's the structure of how that would be set up, and then we would escalate that by a CPI factor on an annual basis, and that's what you're seeing in front of you tonight.
My understanding is, I think FCC sets a max for the monthly fee we can charge, but they did not really set the max, like, permit fee, because permit fee really covers, it's just that recovery of the cost we spend. So my question is, we do spend different amount of staff time when they choose different category of locations, so can we charge different levels of permit fees based on their location?
We can charge different levels if we can document that, yeah, that particular locations are a higher expense, then we would be able to adjust to accommodate for that.
Okay, so what it would take us, for us to document that and then charge different levels of fees for, according to the location?
We would do that through a fee study, and those typically are done on about a five-year increment, and so we, when we do our next fee study, we would, if it was well accounted, we would factor that in and provide that data back.
I thought we are doing it every seven year, and then we are doing one next year, right? So can we include this study next year when we do fee study?
Yeah, if we're doing, and I'm sorry, I'll have to plead being new on this one, but if we're doing a fee study for next year, then we can certainly account for the varying costs associated with these permits.
That would be great. I think, I just heard, I think someone said we had one back in two thousand and sixteen, and then we are due for another one next year. That's also what I just learned, I hope that's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I don't see any new hands raised at this time, so let me go ahead and ask a question. So the Civic Center charge of a thousand dollars a day, historically, how many, how many groups or people have asked to rent out the Civic Center for an event on an annual basis?
Sure, so I think prior to COVID, I don't know if there were any, but we have had several inquiries from groups about wanting to use the Civic Center for their events or, you know, potentially festivals or things of that nature.
Okay, so it would be more like a tented event or some kind, is that what the types of inquiries that have come in have been about?
Or a festival of some sort with tabling and something similar to what Earth Day was in the Civic Center area, I would assume.
Okay, so that's past tense, right? So Earth Day, of course, is now in Library Field, so...
Well, we don't charge a fee for Earth Day because it's a city event, but there are groups that are... But there are groups that are inquiring about using that space.
Right, so my comment was really more directed towards the location of Earth Day right now. So when you're talking about the civic space, are you encompassing Library Field as well?
No, I'm sorry. I was mentioning Earth Day before, when it was pre-COVID in that location.
Okay, so you're just talking about basically the area with concrete between library and community hall and city hall?
Correct.
Okay. I have hands raised again from Councilmember Moore and Vice Mayor Chow. And then, you know, after this round, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to continue discussion, if that's the pleasure of the council. So Councilmember Moore.
I was actually going to make a motion, but.
Oh, please do, actually. You know, it's totally fine to do that earlier. So what's your name?
Okay, I just want to mention, and I hope that there was no, no issue with California Cricket Academy having Earth Day use that field. I'm going to assume that it was all negotiated well. Everything was good. Okay, excellent. So I would move that we adopt resolution number 22-049 approving fiscal year 2022, 2023, fee schedules A, B, C, D, and E effective July 18, 2022, with a specification that nonprofits means 501(c)(3) and the frequency of the fee study be changed to five years in the future.
Five years, sorry, over seven years. Councilmember Moore, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, all right. Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion? And I have a hand from Vice Mayor Chow. Would you like to second the motion?
I'm happy to second that, but I'd like to add my amendment.
Okay, why don't you suggest your friendly amendment at this point? So I'll take that as a second.
Yeah, I second that. The friendly amendment is to, in the next fee schedule that study the different categories of cell tower to capture different efforts that we do spend when they choose different locations.
Councilmember Moore, are you amenable to that?
Yes, yes, I am. And I don't feel I need to make this as any alteration. I just want to make sure that when we're looking at Schedule E, and I'll assume that staff will come to us when they're getting ready to have our discussion and ask if there are some things that we've identified that we think we'd like to see change a little bit. So for instance, I want to make sure that when we're looking at our recreation facility rentals, that we do some, have some comparison of the cities around us and then, and then consider what the rate differential is between the various groups. I'm going to assume that that's, that I don't need to do that as a motion, that when this comes to us, we'll, it'll, we'll have some feedback as well. Is that, is that correct? I see Thomas, yeah. And Joanna, good, okay. So yes, I'm great with that, with the amendment to the main motion.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And Vice Mayor Chow, I assume that you accept your own amendment as the second or the motion?
Yes. So I do still have some questions.
Okay, why don't you ask your questions? And then we'll try to call a question and take a vote on the motion.
So with the new city civic center plaza, I'm assuming that's only for one-day event that really use the entire plaza. Because often we have a small group of people who have like one table at the plaza during the weekend. So those, they don't need to reserve, right? Because library, it has traditionally been a public forum area that's important for our community.
Yes, this is for events that are 500, around 500 people.
Okay. And then what if they use library field kind of like we did for the Earth Festival? Is what would be the charge?
So that is not backed in as a location for that purpose? I'm sure we could look into that, but I would say that since that is the only field available for cricket use in the city, we would want to take that into consideration because it is utilized on a daily basis, basically, Monday through Saturday, or Monday through Saturday and, you know, one Sunday a month. So at this point, so it's not a lot of.
Not available for festival use?
Right.
Okay, that's good to know. And then I think we, our farmer's market do use the creek side parking lot, which is great. However, I think we do need to capture how much we are subsidizing the farmer's market. Although I assume we don't have that as a category to rent out. But should we in some way capture how much that's costing the city? I'm not saying, I'm not supporting that. I just thought we need to be clear on that. And same thing for the memorial park parking lot when it's used by farmer's market.
Right, so there are no fees associated to parking lots at parks in the fee schedule?
Right now. So is, does it make sense to capture this kind of use by, for special things that we don't want to open up for other people to reserve? But we should somehow still capture the cost, staffing cost to the city? Does that make sense to capture that? I am not sure. Could maybe?
I would defer to the city manager or the administrative services director on that.
Okay, so I don't see any takers on that. So Vice Mayor, let's, I'll put that in the category of using the wind. So I'm going to go to Councilmember Way at this point, Vice Mayor. So Councilmember.
Yeah, I have one question. So I'm not opposing to changing the fee schedule to from seven years to five years. I just want to know, what is the cost in associating with doing a fee schedule study and presented? I just a question of how much does it cost to do it?
Good question. Thanks, Councilmember Way. Thomas, you know what the budget is for a fee schedule?
Yes, in our proposed budget, we are budgeting $75,000 for the fee study.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
In our proposed budget, we are budgeting $75,000 for the fee study.
For one fee schedule study?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It is a comprehensive study where they, you know, they survey all the departments and they analyze all the costs and services provided.
Okay, thanks very much. And Councilmember Way, you still have your hand up? Did you have some follow-up to that?
Yes, just one more follow-up question. So are we okay with the cost is going to be a little bit more? Because we not changed it to seven to five.
Was that like $10,000 a year?
The ratio was.
$14,000.
So if the council does desire to do them every five years, then staff would incorporate that into a budget forecast.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised again. Did you have a?
Yeah, I want to get some idea how extra, the comprehensive fee schedule, 75,000, how much is it compared with the total fee we collect per year? So how much do we collect a year for this?
I think you're asking what the fee revenue per year is.
Yeah, fee revenue per year.
Okay, so Thomas, your.
So the increases vary every year depending on the escalator's use. But just as a, kind of to give you more information, this year the increases would increase our fees by over $150,000.
What's the total amount?
That's increase, I mean total amount. Let's say before the pandemic, do we, if you can pull it up quickly, what's the total amount of fees we collect? Not just increase.
I do not have that exact number right now.
You have a round ballpark number is fine.
I think approximately between $500,000 to $1 million.
Okay.
And so if we account for, let's say, inflation of 3% per year? I'm not, my math is not good.
But 3% of a million is 30. You muted yourself, Vice Mayor.
So if we take into account of inflation of 3% a year versus, but then we do increase the fee per year for inflation, right?
So we would increase every year by CPI. So.
By CPI.
But the fee study would allow us to capture any changes more accurately, add new fees, and also increase by more if necessary. And.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. City Attorney Johnson, you have your hand raised at this time. Did you want to make comment?
Yes, very briefly, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to note that there are also legal obligations associated with making sure that, you know, that the fees accurately reflect and don't exceed the cost of providing services. And so to the extent you're, you know, looking at the benefit versus cost of more frequent fee schedule updates, that's another thing to take into account.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised again. Did you?
Yes, I, I, I think the city attorney is, 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 I'm assuming is okay with the change of the frequency to five years because it'll help keep us in alignment with the actuals and so that we, we don't accidentally go over, charge too much for services. Is that, is that what I'm, what I'm to understand?
Yeah, I think, you know, all else being equal, just, you know, having, you know, an up-to-date fee schedule produces, you know, any liability risk for excessive fees under Prop 26 or Prop 218.
Okay, thank you. You know, I remember just from soccer, the field fees just from the Anzies Soccer League were around $100,000 per year just, just for that one organization. And, you know, I like to, I like to look at the Chico City budget policies because they have everything in one place. But when, when we, and they do mention fees will comply with all applicable laws, but they have four different categories of fees. So when we do bring this back and have a discussion, that we'll be talking about fees that would have 100% cost recovery and then fees that may be below 100%. And then we'll have a discussion about the policies for why we don't want to charge full amounts for certain things and then make some adjustments. And, and I think that as each council approaches this, they might have some different opinions about, about the whole fee structure and, and things will change as, as the councils move ahead in the future. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor, well, Thomas, your hand is raised. Did you have some comment at this time?
First comment, so.
No, Vice Mayor, I'm not calling. So Thomas, your hand is raised. Did you have a?
I'm just clarifying what I said earlier about the total fees. So I wasn't, I wasn't including the fees for, you know, citywide. Citywide fees, like including like all fee schedules A, B, C, D, E, is approximately $1 million.
How much?
How much?
$10 million.
$10 million, yeah, that sounds a lot more accurate. With all the charges that you.
Wait, what do you mean not citywide? What were you quoting earlier?
Earlier, I was only looking at the general fund. Like I was only looking at one specific fee. I wasn't looking at all the fees. I was just trying to calculate in my head and I did not include everything.
Oh, then, okay. So Mayor, can I comment now?
Well, I think you've had a lot of comments, but what, what do you have as a?
I was trying to make sense whether $75,000 for comprehensive study makes sense. So with, if, or the fees were $750,000 per year, that's 10%. But now it's 10 times more, so that's 1%. So the, the, the cost of doing a comprehensive fee schedule study is 1% of our annual fee. Then five year makes sense.
Okay, great. We're in agreement. Thomas, did you want to say something? Or can we call a vote here?
Sorry.
Great. Let's go ahead and do that. Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And so we are on to the last item on our agenda. That's item number 18. It's a municipal code amendment to the municipal code, Title II, proposed to add chapter 296, 2.96, I should say, and codify the Economic Development Committee. I believe our presenter here is Tina Kapoor, our Economic Development Manager. So Tina, welcome. Would you like to make this staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, let me just share my screen real quick. Oops, can everybody see my screen? Good evening, honorable mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Tina Kapoor, Economic Development Manager. And we're here today to discuss the proposed ordinance for the Economic Development Committee. The staff report and the draft ordinance are attached with the agenda. And in this presentation, I'll just briefly cover some of the background information and the proposed composition and purpose of this committee. So as background, the committee has met informally for at least over two decades, is our understanding. And as part of the city work program, council requested that the municipal code is amended to codify this committee. More specifically, on February 15 of this year, Mayor and council provided direction to staff to form the committee, which would be comprised of two members of the council and three members of the community representing retail, hospitality, and the technology sector. And so historically, the Economic Development Committee discussed items of importance for local businesses. This would be anything around business attraction, retention, and expansion, and also provide feedback on business-related city initiatives and projects around partnerships and relationships to promote a strong economy. And so similar to the role of the committee in the past, the proposed purpose for the new codified committee is to provide expertise and guidance on policy related to economic development. Also actively promote Cupertino as a location of choice for current and prospective businesses. And so this purpose, recommended purpose can be carried out in three ways. One would be to make recommendations on a broad range of strategic matters that are broadly applicable to cities' economic development goals. Members can also serve as ambassadors to shed a positive light on the city by sharing resources and information with prospective businesses and stakeholders. And lastly, encourage public-private partnerships and identify potential resources to further cities' economic development goals. So taking into account council's direction on the composition of this committee, you'll notice that the proposed membership includes two city council members and three business representatives, again, from the selected industry sectors. So the committee will have five members, as shown here. And so with that, our recommendation today is that council conducts the first reading of this ordinance for the Codified Economic Development Committee and find that the proposed actions are exempt from CEQA. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present, and we're here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Let's go to our members of the public. If any member of the public has a comment on this, please raise your hand on Zoom. Or if you're on the phone and calling in on Zoom, star nine on your phone is how to raise the hand.[1738.54] You'll have three minutes, and if anyone is, uh, watching this on YouTube or the city channel, uh, you'll need to email your comment to cityclerk@cupidino.org. I don't see any hands raised at this time, and so, uh, with, uh, for the moment, still no hands raised. We'll go back to city council. Vice Mayor Chow, your hand was raised first, followed by Councilmember Moore. And so let's start with a, a round of questions, followed by Councilmember Way. And, um, questions for staff with regard to presentation, Vice Mayor Chow?
Um, I'll comment later. I have, okay, I'll comment first. I, I don't think we should, I think the purpose of Economic Development Committee is not only to, to develop, develop our current business, but it should be future-looking. What new business we should bring into Cupertino? So if we identify specific business sectors that's already in Cupertino, we are missing out, um, potential biotech, for example, to bring to, into Cupertino. So I don't want us to hard code what industry sector there should be. And I think we could say with priorities in retail, restaurant, technology, and hospitality. But that's not hardcoded so that the council has flexibility. If a good candidate that, uh, could bring us future opportunity outside of what we currently have, we can still appoint. I have some edits made to the ordinance that I will be ready to make a motion when it's a good time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Next, we have Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Way.
Thank you. I, I, I have a little bit of concern because we have, um, it's a, it's a committee of five and, uh, it would have two city council members. I, I'd almost be inclined to suggest that we would have, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, a Planning Commissioner, it could be the Planning Commission Chair, and, um, uh, perhaps someone from, uh, I would even suggest, uh, sustainability, perhaps. But there could be another, um, committee member or, um, yeah, another committee member from, from the city. And moving this to a, um, a seven-person, uh, committee, uh, with a, a majority coming from, um, from the city, I'm just, just a little concerned about how the voting would go. I don't know if you, we're, we're on the ERC today, but, uh, we had a three-two vote with a, because we're, we're a mix between, between staff and, and, uh, Planning Commission Chair and myself. So when you have, when you do set up a, a group of, of five and you have three members from the business community and you're voting on, you know, where, where, what direction or resources could be spent, I, uh, it, you could have some, um, some conflicts, uh, could have outvoting on certain things, so, uh, um, and it's with, and you might be making recommendations on how things, uh, will be, money will be spent, I should say. So I have some concern about it. I don't know if any of the other council members have, um, have any, uh, matching concerns with regards to that, but that, that's my only, my only thought on it would be to expand, uh, expand the group. I thought that the wording was very, um, uh, nicely chosen for, um, the, what, the, the one, two, and three items, uh, that the, uh, committee would involve itself in. I thought that was well, well-written, broadly-written, and I, and I, uh, think that's great that this is finally getting codified. I'm really glad to see it.
Uh, great, thanks, Councilmember Moore. And just, uh, a clarification, um, to staff, either Tina or Chris, I guess this would be a question for you guys. So how are the committee members, other than the council members selected? Or for that matter, are the council members? I, I, I assume that the, um, council member, committee members will be part of committee assignments at the end of the year or whatever it happens to be.
Yeah, go ahead, Tina.
Um, I, I was just gonna say, Chris, um, that the composition, I can talk about the composition itself, but maybe, Chris, you can shed some light on how they're appointed. But my understanding it, understanding is that all committee members are appointed by council. But my thoughts on the composition, um, to Councilmember Moore's, uh, point, um, we, uh, also think having seven would offer a richer dialogue. There's definitely going to be a diverse perspective, um, going on. You know, one thought, and that will also address, uh, Vice Mayor Chow's, um, concern, one thought is maybe getting someone from the commercial real estate world that could represent different kinds of sectors and businesses. That, that's one option as well, um, if other committee members, um, could be busy with other assignments. So we can definitely recommend, uh, different kinds of members, but I agree, um, with seven, there's a better, there's a richer dialogue and the, the kind of quorum is also addressed.
Okay, uh, thanks, Tina. And, um, yeah, you answered the question with regard to selection as well. A pleasure, counsel. There's no need to ask Chris to reiterate. Or, or did you want to say something, Chris?
Yeah, just to clarify that the ordinance does provide that the, uh, appointment of, of committee members is, is governed by, um, uh, the resolution govern, governing the appointment of, uh, of, uh, commissions and committees. So it's the same process that council uses for other committees and commissions.
Right, and the resolution explicitly states that, um, the members serve at the pleasure of council.
A, as does the ordinance, yes.
As does the ordinance, right. Okay, great. So let's go to Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Actually, um, I was gonna follow Vice Mayor's thought trend, and also I do think five is a little bit not enough. Um, I, I remember when we did this study, we have other, we have examples from other city, how many, um, you know, is in the Economic Development, um, Committee members, if they do have one. I remember the members more like seven to nine. And I, I, I do like the idea that we need to look forward, so, uh, we, we need to have someone who has an expertise of economic development, maybe outside of Cupertino, because we're part of Silicon Valley. So I was gonna suggest one of the members could be outside of us, could be, maybe it's not our own chamber, but the Silicon Valley Chamber in the, in the greater Silicon Valley that has more outlook in what other people do. That's just a thought that we could, uh, add a position that doesn't necessarily have to be in the Cupertino city, has more outlook, more future-looking, or what other regions are doing. The second thought is we're looking at stakeholders, and I do think our, our school district, three of them, the Cupertino Union School District, Fremont Union High School District, and DeSantis College, has, um, you know, a good investment into the community, into the economic development. Maybe it could be a one representative from the three districts, they can, it does, not three representative, but one representative education field will be a good one. That's already seven, so that would be my recommendation. I wouldn't think we want, that's just my personal view, um, a Planning Commissioner, Chair to be part of, because they have a commission position already and they, they could, you know, always come and express their e- experiences, that we need more different commissioners in this, uh, committee members in this, uh, group. So I would follow through the seven and then add maybe one more for outlook outside of Cupertino, have more expertise, and one for, from our education field.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Way. And, um, I guess, uh, Councilmember Willie, did you have any comments on this before we return back to Vice Mayor Chow?
Well, I think, uh, the, the items brought up by the council pretty much cover it. I, I also think, uh, seven would be, uh, for more preferred, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay, um, you know, I, I will say that staff did, uh, a good job in, um, you know, kind of, uh, look at the landscape of these types of committees, you know, locally. And so I have numbers of eleven, five, four, nine, seven, six. I mean, so, so seven does kind of seem to hit about a, a median spot in terms of, uh, you know, who would, uh, how, how many people would be on the Economic Development Committee and kind of have us in keeping with, uh, the, the, the general, uh, numbers of the area? For the identity, you know, I think Councilmember Moore mentioned a Planning Commissioner, and I forget, uh, who the, um, maybe a Sustainability Commissioner, I think she said. And then Councilmember Way was talking about someone from the education sector, and Tina mentioned real estate. I mean, um, you know, I, I, I guess that's a few to choose from, um, given the, uh, the makeup. But, uh, let's, uh, let's hear from Vice Mayor Chow, and hopefully we can get a motion on the table for, uh, further discussion and hopefully a vote. Vice Mayor?
Okay, so when this item was first on the council agenda, that was April fifth, I think. And in that virgin, the, the staff recommendation was seven members. So I do have a virgin where it's seven members. I edited based on the April, uh, virgin of the ordinance. And my proposal at that time was two council members, uh, three Cupertino business representatives, and two Cupertino resident representatives with business background. And so that's one possibility. And if we are appointing commissioners, I think it's, would be more appropriate for planning and, uh, technology commission, because then they, they are more aware of, uh, what kind of technology business that we can bring into Cupertino, um, if we are going with commissioners. But if we are going with two Cupertino resident representatives, um, we can specify that they have previously or currently own a business, the business doesn't have to be in Cupertino, but then they are Cupertino resident, or they have experience with business development. And then there's three Cupertino business representative could say, we can say that , uh, we prioritize in those three areas that we would like to focus on. So I think, yeah, that, that would be my thought. Yeah. But now I will need to edit the current virgin to, to have the seventh member, that, that, I don't have that ready. I, but I can share. So this is my virgin, uh, my edit from the last, last virgin, where, uh, uh, two council city, two council member, two business, and two resident. And this, uh, I edited that to, uh, about the qualification for these two groups. And this is a virgin I have based on today's agenda, uh, ordinance. That's five members. If you give me some time, I can edit this to, to combine those two. If that's what the council members would like to see, um, then, but, yeah.
Okay, uh, let's, uh, let's, oh, okay, let's go to Chris. And Chris, you have your hand raised. Did you want to speak to these comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to make, make a suggestion as to process. I think, I, I mean, it always makes me a bit nervous to be editing, um, the code from the DIAF. So, I mean, I think if there are, um, changes that council wants made to the draft ordinance, um, they could just specify those changes and, and it may just be easier to bring back, uh, you know, the revised ordinance for a first reading, rather than, you know, trying to, to do this in, in real time.
Yeah, let's do that. I mean, it's not, um, critically necessary that we, uh, ask for a reading tonight, so.
So you want me to write the motion in a more informal language?
Well, I, 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 I think, I think we need to figure out how many people we want and who we want on there, basically.
Okay.
And we just give staff instruction, uh, to come back with, uh, proposed ordinance to that effect, so. So Councilmember Moore, I, you know, and I will kind of, you know, kind of call out again the, the people I've heard from, the suggestions. Uh, Councilmember Way suggested an educational representative. Uh, Councilmember Moore suggested a Planning Commissioner, Sustainability Commissioner. Vice Mayor, you were suggesting particular parameters as to, um, how the businesses or the business representatives, um, were connected to the community. And then I think Tina mentioned a real estate or a Realtor interest. And, um, I think, uh, Vice Mayor, you also mentioned, uh, a member of TIC as opposed to a member of Sustainability. Uh, that's, you know, that's, that's at least nine or ten. So, so I think we would just need to win down, you know, who are representatives. It would be, Chris, you have your hand up again, or did that, uh, just come from last time?
Sorry, Mayor, I will take it down.
Oh, no worries. No, I was just going back and forth between windows. Uh, all right, Councilmember Moore, your, your hand is up. Do you have thoughts on, um?
Yes, I do.
Or would you like to bring forward a motion of some kind?
Uh, well, I might bring forward a motion. Um, so I, I'm, I'm kind of thinking the nine is, is an interesting total. So looking at two council members, the technology sector representative, the retail small business representative, hospitality tourism sector representative is exactly as it has, uh, in the, this, the staff report. I'm wondering if, uh, having TIC and sustainability might be a good idea. Um, when I think of sustainability and, uh, um, the, the plastics ordinance, the, uh, the, the movement towards, um, the, the green economy, I think they might bring a perspective that could be a kind of some guiding principles in some of the discussions, and it could be, um, pretty interesting. And then, um, lastly, I like the idea for the real estate and education sectors to, to be covered, um, as well. So that would be two council, the TIC, um, the three in the, the three business sectors, real estate and education. But then we're up to nine, but that might actually work out if people can't make the meetings, that you still are, have, have quorum, um, present and you still have a lively discussion, even if you have, uh, just a meeting of five, you still have a good, good-sized group. If you only have five, as, as we're noting, it's, you could have a lot of cancellations or, or conflicts on schedule, because they're business people, um, they might not be able to make all these meetings. So those are my thoughts. If you, if you want, want me to make a motion or just, uh, if collectively we want to have staff come back with this edited list, if, if, uh, the, the council is amenable to it, so we can do that, um, it's your.
I, you know, I, I think that's actually a pretty good, uh, direction. And so, um, let, let, let's go ahead and try to put that on. So not to, um, not, not to call your motion, but, but I think to reiterate, you're looking for, uh, a modified ordinance, um, that has two council, a tech rep, a retail rep, a hospitality rep, uh, someone from the TIC Commission, someone from the Sustainability Commission, representative of real estate, and a representative of, of education. So, um, that's nine, and, uh, you'd like, uh, to make the motion to direct staff to come back with modified ordinance to that effect. Is that, is that a reasonable reiteration of your motion, Councilmember Moore?
Absolutely, um, yes.
Would anyone like to second that motion, Councilmember Way?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, um, I guess we're on a discussion at this point. Vice Mayor Chow, do you have a, a discussion point or perhaps a friendly amendment or or something?
I would like to propose a replacement, uh, motion.
A substitute motion. Okay, so Vice Mayor Chow, uh, please, uh, proceed with your substitute.
Okay. So this is what I'd like to see, uh, the membership, two council members, two commissions, um, from sustainability and, uh, TIC, so that's four members. And then if we are, if we are doing nine, then I'd like to seek two Cupertino residents with business representatives, um, that have experienced either own or, um, previously owned a business, and, uh, three representatives of Cupertino businesses. I don't want to specify particular, um, category for each position, but we can put priorities in this three area, um, because I don't think it makes sense to hard code, we have to have one from hospitality, we have to have one from this or that. And I, I don't remember what is Councilmember Moore's, uh, motion right now. Does that include the education?
Yeah, Councilmember Moore has, has education and, uh, real estate.
I don't think we have, we should have a representative from education, because they are an important, uh, member of our community, but it's not suitable for economical development, I think. But it doesn't prevent them to fit into one of these categories if they're, if they apply. But, but not all economic decision, economic decision has to do with education. And they can definitely, they are an important member, we should definitely seek out their input, um, issues related to education. Um, and Chamber is important, but I think also that they are advocacy group, and when there are issues that's, uh, related to Chamber, of course, we can engage them, invite them to provide input, and like all the other organizations. Uh, it could be real estate developer, some issues are related to them, some issues are not. So when issues are related to real estate, definitely we should reach out to them, but not all economic development issues are related to real estate development. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, I, I, I appreciate that, uh, set of comments, Vice Mayor Chow. So there, there's a motion. So there, there's a motion, a substitute motion on table by Vice Mayor Chow. Is there a second for that substitute motion before we um, entertain some deliberation on it?
Um, so one more point. My concern was one person representing a specific industry sector. That person would become an advocate for that one particular sector rather than representing the interests of Cupertino. We want input from specific sectors, yes. But if they are a member, a voting member of the committee and they represent one sector, are they representing only the interest of that best sector? Then perhaps they are not looking out for the best interest of Cupertino. So they, even if with priority in those three men, industries, they should still know that they were present, looking out for the best interest of Cupertino, not only their own specific sector they are appointed to. So that's why I'm concerned with locking a person into an industry. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And Councilmember Way, your hand is raised. Did you want to second the substitute?
No, I have a question. Oh, oh, sorry. Um, okay, I'll second it so we can make discussions. Is that, is that a process? Yeah.
Uh, well, if, if, if you don't second it, then it just goes off the table and we're left.
Yeah, no, I'm not seconding it. I, I have a question, actually.
Okay, well, you can ask your question.
Okay, so um, my question is, if we don't have representatives from different sectors, we have one from two, uh, two from one fields, then that's even an even field. So I think when we appoint our commission, committee members, we actually put that question out. You bring your expertise on your fields, but your outlooks for the Cupertino economics, not just your field. So I, I think that could be a criteria. So I, I would think specify one each would have more representation, but whoever we pick needs to have an open mind. This is not just for that particular field. It's for the economic development of the whole Cupertino.
Well, um, thank you, Councilmember Way. You know, we're, we're at um, the original motion that's on the table. The substitute motion doesn't have a second or, and so uh, you, you know, I, I will make some comments on the motion on the table. I, I think it will be, um, there'll be work to find somebody from each of those uh, fields. And when I look at our commissions over time that have specified people that we have to put in there, um, it, it is an added dimension that could, um, you know, sort of limit um, your ability to fill the positions and then when you need to replace them, uh, they need to be specific. But, no, I, I'm willing to do that work. You know, I, I, I think that this is a good, um, this is a good diversity. It's a good mix of entities. I, I hear what Vice Mayor Chow is saying with regard to, you know, specific um, industries. And, you know, I, I, I think education is an interesting question. It's, it's a very interesting question and especially in our community. But I think where I cut on it um, over time is that I, I think it's actually a fairly significant part of the, of the economic drivers of our, of our city. But where I'm a little bit, you know, where, where I want to be really careful is that it doesn't turn into some kind of a mechanism for, you know, trying to push like bond measures or, you know, parcel taxes or something like that. I mean, that's, we need to be particularly careful about that. Um, and um, what else? Uh, I, I would say that uh, I, I really like the idea of Vice Mayor Chow's pointing out, you know, the Cupertino resident, you know, requirement. And let me ask our, our, our city attorney. So if we're, if we're tying this to our municipal code as to other appointees, uh, is the default that they have to be Cupertino residents to begin with?
Uh, so I'd have to go back and look at the resolution. Generally, the, 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 the specific code sections for different commissions and committees specify that, that, that they need to be Cupertino residents. Um, you know, i- if it's not specified, um, then I think you generally be able to appoint non-residents. I mean, in this, you know, for example, owners of a Cupertino business would.
Okay, I, you see, I thought, I thought it was the opposite. I, I thought that if it's not specified, they do need to be a resident, but I'm not, I'm not certain on that. Because I, I know that, and maybe the city clerk is, is the best person to answer this. So when there is a specified spot for, does not need to be a Cupertino resident, I think, I, I think our audit committee has someone like that, is that right? Or one of the committees has, uh, or commissions possibly has, has, maybe the housing commission.
Yes.
Has a spot where you don't actually need to be a resident.
Sustainability Commission, um, the, I believe Fine Arts.
Fine Arts, yeah, I think it's Fine Arts, yeah.
Uh, so, um, well, Fine Arts might be a non-resident, yes. Um, and housing, yes. Housing has.
Okay, but, but, but Chris was saying that it seems to be kind of in the code for each particular, um, you know, advisory group. So I, I think, um.
So for instance, sustainability, it's qualified that um, one from the education sector um, and one is a business representative. And the housing, um, you, uh, I believe we removed one of them was um, a business member. But yes, it's, it's specified, it's outlined in the code.
Okay.
Mayor Paul.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's not a general catchall for commissions and committees that, that states by default, you do need to be a resident or you don't have to be a resident, I guess is, is the point.
They're all specific.
Yeah, that's correct. And there, there's nothing in the, the appointment resolution either that, that dictates residency. It is controlled by the code.
Okay.
Mayor Paul, if I may, uh, I was just gonna say in the draft ordinance that we submitted, um, we did, did have include language that the members shall be Cupertino residents or own a business or be currently employed at a business or organization within the city of Cupertino.
Right, I, I mean, it's pretty expansive, right? I mean, it would seem like you wouldn't, I mean, if there, there was like literally no connection to our geography from a business perspective, then why would you appoint that person to? I, I mean, maybe they have like really great expertise in, you know, retailers. Um, but uh, but yeah. So, so Vice Mayor, you, you, you have a comment at this time?
Oh, what exactly is the current motion on the table? Anyone has it written down? I can't remember.
Um, so, so the motion is to direct staff to go back and modify the, the, the draft ordinance uh, to include appointees, two of which will be from council, one from the tech sector, one from retail, one from hospitality, uh, one from the TIC commission, one from the sustainability commission, one from the real estate sector and one from education. So beyond that, we haven't really specified whether each of, you know, these representatives need to be residents, for instance.
Yeah, so without, Mayor, if I may, um, without, um, um, without further direction from council, we will, you know, assume that the, the, the language in the current ordinance specifying, you know, residency or some association with a business in Cupertino is, is fine. Uh, we might have to tweak that language somewhat to, to, for the, um, if an educa, if the education sector is included, just to make sure that it makes sense. Um, but, but that would, that would, you know, without further direction from council, that's the approach we would take.
Right, I mean, as specified, the education representative would be one of three school districts, you know, none of which are just exclusively defined.
So I count only eight. Two council members, tech, retail, hospitality, TIC, sustainability, education, that's six, plus two council member, that's eight.
Real estate, real estate is there.
Real estate. So technically, technically, um, the TIC and sustainability could both be not resident. We could have a majority who are not residents. My concern is business have different interests from residents who actually live in Cupertino. Business, if they have business in Cupertino, their interest is to develop their business. But the Cupertino residents, our, our interest is to develop our tech space. Um, that's why I think it's important that we have a resident majority.
Okay, uh, thanks, Vice Mayor Chow. Let's uh, go on. Uh, Councilmember Moore, you had your hand raised. Did you want to make a comment or?
Uh, well, I want to discuss vice mayor. No, I, I'd comment on the education um, part and, and I, I just wanted to keep this fairly, fairly open ended and, and when, when we get uh, the applicants, um, I think, I think we'll probably have some deliberative discussion on it. Um, but I was thinking more broadly that to not, not just individuals that would come from the different school districts, but you could potentially have um, someone from a Montessori school, uh, or a language school, um, even music or art schools. Depending on, you know, on the year, we might want to um, uh, here, have some different voices. So it wasn't, wouldn't always be someone from a school district, but there's, there's so many different aspects to education that I think it could be really, actually quite, quite enlightening and, and, and have some really interesting discussions there. And, and same with real estate, there's so many last aspects to, to the real estate uh, um, uh, industry that we could really have some interesting uh, economic diversity in, in discussions there.
Uh, Councilmember Moore, did you um, want to limit the duration of a term? Because the terms as described in the draft ordinance right now is four years.
That seems really long. That seems really, really long to me. Um, yeah, I would, I would want to do that. Uh, so ordinarily, let's see, when we assign someone to.
Just, just keep in mind that, you know, our typical commission is five and those are four-year terms. And, you know, you know the interview schedule. So if we're having a commission of nine.
They're all gonna.
Shortening the four-year term, that, that's just that many more interviews to give them.
Hmm, and they're all gonna be starting at the same time. Um, well, I guess we're gonna have to choose, choose wisely and carefully. And, uh, and um, I would consider making, I don't know if there's some creative way.
Probably be five-four to begin with. I mean, so have five, maybe five-two-year terms and four-four-year terms.
That sounds really smart. I think that's a good idea. So perhaps that could be part of the, the motion that, uh, of rotation be, be worked in. Cause we saw this issue with the, um, we, having to get creative with the teen commission. Yeah, yeah, so, um, right.
Okay, so if you'll accept that as a friendly, and, and how about um, the notion of, of resident majority? Did you want to instruct staff to try to describe that um, as part of the requirement as noted by Vice Mayor Chow as a concern?
Um, well, I, I think, yeah, I, I, I'm kind of on the fence with that one because I, I, I wouldn't want to lose a, um, an astute sustainability commissioner um, just because they, they weren't a Cupertino resident because that's kind of an, a, a, a knowledge base that we're looking for. And, and, and I'm not sure where the other, and, and maybe it was a TIC commissioner could possibly not be a, a Cupertino resident. So for, for those um, particular positions, um, I, I, I'm, I'm looking for, for what they know. Um, and their contribution.
So staggered terms, um, five for two years initially and, and four for four years. So um, uh, Councilmember Way, I, I believe you seconded it, is that right? Or am I?
Yes, I did.
Are you okay with that?
Uh, yes, I was actually going to add on to Councilmember Moore's um, education because it doesn't have to be the school district. It could be someone with an education background that can bring that unique, uh, you know, uniqueness.
Okay, so thank you for the clarification of that. Um, and so I, I don't think it needs to be part of the motion itself. Um, so Tina, you, you have your hand raised and then we'll go back to Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I just wanted to, um, I just wanted to add to some of the conversation here. And I agree uh, with Councilmember Moore's, um, you know, the residency requirement could limit us. I'm thinking specifically if it's a commercial broker, um, it may be better for us to look um, regionally in that sense. One, we will get Cupertino on their radar, right? So they're looking at and working with new businesses. So we definitely want that perspective. Um, and then in terms of education, I think having an education um, representative would be great. If we can get D N's at college, that would be wonderful because, you know, as, you know, most businesses are looking for workforce opportunities and we could, we could, we could definitely use that. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, and there are definitely workforce connections in D N's offerings. Um, Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised.
Um, yeah, I think uh, it's a good point. Education doesn't have to be public agency, public schools. And we do have a big uh, offering of after-school programs, enrichment programs and educational services in Cupertino. Although I think these services, they don't contribute to sales tax. Is that right?
Oh, the services?
Services, those.
Probably correct.
We have a lot of those businesses. Um, but maybe they can be B two B, I don't know. Um, so, yeah. So I, I still don't feel comfortable with identifying specific uh.
Sectors?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's um, you know, it's a fair difference.
I have TIC commission, now we have tech too. So we have two tech people. Um. So.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna go on to Councilmember Way, Vice Mayor, uh, Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to uh, address Vice Mayor's concern about residency. This is economic development. I, I really do think um, the, the people we choose to be on the committee should have that economic expertise, whether they live in Cupertino or not. And then they will bring that vitality to Cupertino. So I'm not that concerned about whether they live in Cupertino or not, more than their expertise. But I think the broader uh, definition is either they live, work, or what's, I'm sorry, what was the other? There was a definition of.
They, they, they live, work or have a business in Cupertino.
Right, yeah, I, I think that's a good definition.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and kind of close this out after a couple more comments. One from Councilmember Moore and Vice Mayor Chow, I heard her hand raised again. Um, Councilmember Moore, you've taken your hand down, so.
Oh, oh, no, no.
Who do you want to speak?
I was just being polite. Um, so I just want to make sure tech means also biotech, that, that'd be included in there um, with, with that category. Cause I think it would be kind of interesting if we could attract more biotech to, to the city. Um, that'd be, that'd be a, a good thing. Okay, that's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And Vice Mayor Chow.
I am still concerned to, can, um, can I make a friendly amendment to have to, so that we have, it says to council members, at least three should be Cupertino residents because we have seen that Economic Development Committee in the past did not really look out for Cupertino's interest. They all have their business interest to push. And then they actually were going in, in a totally different direction than what residents would like to see. I don't want to see that happen again. So I would like to try a friendly amendment so that three of the, three of the five other non-council member and non-commissioners are Cupertino residents in addition to these industry experts. So they could be Cupertino residents uh, with business outside of Cupertino. But they are.
Why, why would you exclude the commission members from that? Uh, Vice Mayor, why not?
Otherwise complicated.
Well, I, I, I don't, I, I, I think you just reduce your chances of making that happen. Well, let me see if I can um, see if the uh, the, the motioner would accept that as a friendly amendment.
You mean, so we should say a total of three?
Well, it seems like you just want a majority.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Yeah, you, you want five people on.
Okay, so then, um, yeah, so besides two council members, three other, at least three other members should be Cupertino residents.
Yeah, well, I, and, and I'll make note that I've asked about that precisely and it wasn't accepted. But um, I can go back to Councilmember Moore and see if that would be acceptable as uh, the, the maker of motion.
Well, when it, when it comes back, we can, um, just for purposes of, of finishing this item up. Uh, so we, we could have a line that, that says that the, the, it's a committee um, that will maintain a majority, a resident. that will maintain a, a majority, a, a resident majority. But, but when it comes back, um, and, and hopefully it won't be such a full agenda, but when it comes back, we can have that discussion, um, further and decide whether to keep the, keep it or, keep it or strike it in, in, in the code.
Okay. I have the optional subsection.
Can the staff bring back this option? So we have two options to select.
Yeah, we'll, 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 um, yes, we'll, we'll bring back, um, an ordinance with, with optional language.
Okay, so the motion's amended to have optional ordinance, um, language to say something to the effect of maintaining a majority of residents. And I would need the seconder, which is Councilmember Wei, um, to agree to that if that works.
Councilmember Wei?
Yes.
Oh, great, thank you. You're shaking your head and saying it. So thank you, I appreciate that. And so, um, let's, uh, let's close this out and, um, Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote for this motion?
Mayor, okay, uh, okay.
Yes.
Would, uh, will I be conducting the first reading also?
No, the, the, it's direction to staff to come back and modify the, the ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Um, aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. I'm sorry, at least it's ten something. Uh, we are now at the end of our agenda, I believe, so let me just double check this. Um, yes, that was item eighteen. Now we are at adjournment. Uh, thank you very much, everyone, and, um, you know, congratulations. I think we've really accomplished quite a bit. So I, I anticipate this as our busiest week of the year, especially after all that we've done over the years to, you know, put everything into line, not just with capital improvement program, but the work plan and the budget. So, so thanks for everyone's hard work. It is, you know, very deeply appreciated by, I know, everyone on council. And so, you know, I'll, I'll leave it at that. And if you want me to read a poem to that effect, I've, I've, I've written one, but I won't do that now. So thanks so much, everyone. Have a great night and we will see you for our first regular council meeting in June. That's June seventh. Take care, meeting adjourned.